We're meeting on Monday, July 28th at 7:15. What I'd like to do right now to take town business first. About a week ago, a couple of weeks ago, we decided everything that's coming in, the townspeople and the town business is going to be top of the agenda. John's here this evening. John, if you would, your A&R and your paperwork, please.
Yeah, two formates.
Yes, thank you. That's okay.
We weren't sure what to charge for lots because we're kind of confused.
Paperwork's very good. It's all, won't even have to say anything about it. Alright, fine with these. Kathy, you want to get any more?
Yes.
These, yeah, so usually they'll sign those, but you already did one, so we can have these signed if you want. If one stays with us, one goes to the clerk.
Okay. With that, John, the Mylar, and we need four copies. Alright, and once we do that, Mylar will stay with me, and then Derek and Bob will take one copy. Melissa will look at this, and Sue's going to get a little bit more. That's mine, that'll stay right there. Thanks. Alright, boys, turn around. I'll pop open. Thank you, John. Sue's got things, John. John, if you would, so everybody's following the same, explain what you're going to do.
This is from my houses right here. This, doing this right away, all this was one parcel of land. My dad had come in quite a few years ago and subdivided these two lots off of the land. They never recorded the deeds, so the deeds were these lines here. These weren't even actual lots. I was building this building last, but it wasn't recorded in the registry deed. So what I was saying is all this made it one parcel, and I'm separating it here at this line and here at this line. And including the rest of the area, these two lots, this, doing it, cutting off this part up here. I'm adding a little bit to my house.
The house on top.
Yeah, just adding, but my pool was actually down this way, so I had to add that to make that right.
He kinda had to move the pool.
No. I was swimming house a bit.
It was Dad's land, so I wasn't too concerned about where I put the pool at the time.
Alright, with that, John, you just show Bob, Sue, and Derek the same way.
There's one pool. Yeah, the pool's here. Yep, this is my driveway, my house here. This parcel here, it's all one parcel, and it goes all the way over to Oino Road. This parcel and this parcel, my dad and I subdivided quite a few years ago.
Oh, that's all over here.
But it was never recorded, so the old deed turned out at an angle like this and over like this, so these weren't even recorded. The town's trying to rebuild the lot. So we're just adding this little parcel here, and making this one parcel, and this is the second parcel. I'm just giving myself a little bit more, and then a little bit more by my driveway.
Okay, so what about this is nothing, or this is part of it?
That's going to be part of it, this right away here, and then these two are going to be part of this.
So then you can make it all of that part of this.
Do I know where we are? You just don't.
Alright, John, you understand?
This house is right here.
I know.
I did add property, didn't really care where you put it. Maybe do something, you better make sure it's on your property.
My son's daughter's got this.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Bummer if you sold somebody a built a night out, and you then found out that the pool's down there. That's why you can't use your pool anymore, thanks.
Yep.
Or you can only use the shallow.
But one was a lot, so you separate it. Two are becoming four. That's what.
Yeah, he paid for two, so eighty dollars. It's all going into yours?
Yeah.
Because originally it was two lots.
Running it right here.
Yeah. That's going to kind of.
One parcel.
Thank you.
Father Derek?
House is going to stay, I'm adding a little bit to my pool.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
How much cut drive?
So, okay. Boys, any questions? Kathy, all the paperwork together?
I have all the paperwork right here.
Okay, and the Mylar, we've got, and everybody should have a check.
So it's just a check, and we decided two lots, so eighty dollars. Yeah. That's what I was going to say, but I'm not going to say eight.
After everybody had an opportunity to look at it first, John explained it going down to everybody individually or last two as a group, are there any questions by anybody about what you're seeing here on the plans presented?
It's pretty straightforward, John.
Alright, Kathy, everything's in order on my end?
Everything in order on my end.
Alright, the way it's been presented, the way it's been discussed with everybody, here are no concerns for the applicant. Is there a motion to accept the A&R? And let's see now. Presented by John, parcel one and parcel two, the combination of both, and the size of the lot as presented.
I make a motion, we accept the plans as presented.
As presented and discussed by the applicant, right?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay, so take a minute, John, we're going to sign them all, and.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Kathy can start anywhere you want, guys.
Sorry, Derek.
Your signature?
Yeah. It's a lousy place, but we decided.
It's not working.
It's working.
Use the other one, those are fine points. We can't afford new ones.
Not with the budget here?
No, because I need envelopes.
Something in there.
Let me just throw a date on there.
Twenty-eight. Those are mine.
Who's this one?
That's true.
Sure, huh?
Yep.
Here's your Mylar. And here's your penny. And that way, Mylar should be better.
Alright. Just a couple? Mylar understood?
Yeah.
Do you want to sign the two that are on the?
I will, yes, ma'am.
Saying it right away, we want to know. Not the same person, is it? It's just a line.
John, who else copies for yourself?
I can.
Well, he can have a couple of these.
You can have a couple of these, that way they're signed, okay? And the signature will be on.
I'll keep those for one of these.
Does Melissa sign those, Derek?
Yeah, they're also in.
Yeah, you just want me to sign down here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, no. You're going to sign the same way where you just did.
I just put some.
This is for John to sign.
Okay, that copy up there.
Yeah.
We're all.
Yeah, I need those.
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to do a little chemo. I was thinking at school. I'm looking at it for the first time since my student graduated last year. High school. Yeah. Yeah. She wants some little high school. See, that's why I don't come back to this place. They all really don't care about how I am. Yeah, I used to live to tutor eight in the L. That's what she wanted.
I need those two, one fancy one for us, so I will give you that.
Okay.
And if you want these two, you can really have these two.
Sure.
Can you just gave me the unsigned ones? That those have the sign ones. If you want, those two, so you're good there.
I've scotted them.
Make sure you register.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you later, John.
We have a couple of minutes left, let's do her payroll. Is there a motion to pay Kathy as written?
Yes, I make the motion, Madam Champion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to pay Bill Scanlon?
Motion made to pay Mr. Scanlon the amount of seventy-one fifty dot zero zero.
Melissa?
Anybody?
Second? All in favor?
Leave me dying on the table.
Aye.
Did everybody read the minutes online?
Yes.
All set.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes from January seventh, fourteenth, and seventeenth as written?
Are we all here?
On the seventeenth, there is only three, Bob, Jared, and Bill. So that one we'll have to hold table.
Okay.
The table is the seventeenth.
Okay, the other two?
The other two, I will motion to approve the minutes of January seventh, two thousand nineteen, January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, as written, Madam Champion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting next month, uh, next week?
Yes.
Okay, um, next regular meeting is two-four.
Two-four.
Ten-four.
Comments and concerns, go quick?
Yes, for the budget for next year. Bringing up to add extra hours into mine to cover these meetings.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm not working all summer, pretty much.
Okay.
But we have to figure out how much to add. I know we may not need them, but just in case.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, I'm dropping Thursday's hours when we have a Monday night meeting.
We add to what we need, and whatever we don't use, we'll go back to free cash, and we start again in November.
Based on what we've used this year.
Yeah.
That's how we have to go by.
Anything else?
Do we want to increase our budget for, thank you. We can wait for Bill. Our expenses, we want to add to that, because things are getting a little, it's more expensive, stamps went up.
Stamps went up.
Postage went up huge.
Yeah. So there is some things that are going up. My toner is very expensive.
Oh, yeah.
I just ordered two, just for the black, and that one, they're expensive. And I have four different colors, so that's expensive, so we might, I need to think about that. So I did put the budget in your package.
Okay.
So you can look it over.
Alright, now, seven-thirty, continue the public hearing on special permit two-eight-four, two-eight-five, site plan fifty-two and fifty-three for ZPT, Coy Hill Road.
Thank you, John, thank you very much. For the record, my name is Ernie Mello, I'm with the applicant ZPT Energy Solutions. Is this, first of all, is this in a good spot? I know it's kind of small.
Yeah, because we've got ours here.
I have Stephanie McDonald with me as well, from Boston O'Neil. She has some other copies, but I think you guys have some smaller copies and a big plan as well. And if I need to move this, just let me know, I'll bring it around. Now, it's a little bit small over here. So tonight, we're excited to be talking about a solar project we've been working on here for a couple of years now. We just got finished at the end of last year for quite a long process through the Conservation Commission, but we did receive an order condition, so the site plan is a limited work, everything associated with the limited work and all that has been defined and approved by the COMCOM. And so that's kind of what's led us here now to the planning board seeking approval. So the property is located on Coy Hill Road, it's on the easterly side of Coy Hill Road. Coy Hill Road is right here, and the project covers two abutting parcels, they're under different ownership. So the plan is to combine those with, through an A&R plan, and the project assumes that it's been combined and kind of stretches over the two properties. The property lines are tough to see, but basically the shape of it is, there's some frontage down here that kind of, there's two dog legs that go easterly from Coy Hill Road, and then it opens up. One of the property lines dives down to the south and comes up here. That's the bigger property, and then the smaller one kind of has some frontage, and it comes in here and then wraps to the north of the property and comes down and consists of this whole area which has this stream on it towards the easterly side of the project. So both parcels combined are seventy-two, just over seventy-two acres, seventy-two point two acres. This, a lot of the property here, what you see in these colors, this light blue, and then the yellow are the wetlands. So there's a significant portion of the site that's wet. Coy Hill, anybody who's been up there, the top of Coy Hill is up to the north, so this is all a south-facing slope. It's, you know, good, fairly, you know, prominent slope to the south here. So all the wetlands are at the south, you can see the fingers kind of extending to the north. And then again, there's the stream running down the easterly portion, and there's some wetlands that kind of poke in from that end as well. So that's kind of what shifted the project work. It's been, you know, we planned for a certain capacity, we went out there, got a flag, we shunk it down, but it's pushed the solar panels and, you know, the bulk of the project up to the northwest portion of the properties. So what you're looking at there are the roads, and I'm sure the board is fairly experienced seeing these plans by now. So again, seventy-two point two acres on the total two pieces. The limit of work for the site is twenty-four point four acres, so that includes everything, all the clearing, the access, the drainage, the shade buffer, and the solar panels. But within that area, as far as what's inside the fence, the solar, all the equipment, that takes up just over sixteen and a half acres. Okay, so I'll just kind of walk through basically what the site looks like from the access road in, and then kind of go a little bit over some of the phasing stuff that we worked through the COMCOM. So the access to the site obviously is coming off Coy Hill Road, and it will be through a fourteen-foot gravel access road. So there's a road that's kind of cutting right now, a dirt road from Coy Hill. It's fairly, there's a fairly prominent slope down, and there is a wetland crossing. There's a wetland little stream that kind of cuts across there. So I believe there's a kind of a temporary crossing installed there now. So that gravel access road will traverse kind of east, east to west over here. There'll be a wetland crossing. It continues on until it gets into where the property opens up, and then turns north and goes to a gate which will allow anybody inside the array here. So the whole array is supposed to be enclosed by an eight-foot-high security fence, and there'll be a typical security gate that's detailed in the plans with a Knox box. That'll be located right there. So the access road again comes in here, goes to the wetland crossing, turns north, gets to the gate, and then kind of goes in this manner, cross the array, and up to kind of the northerly extent of the array. So that bypasses both spots where we have electrical equipment, the inverters and the batteries. One location is right inside of the fence there, and then there's another location up to the northeastern side of the array. So the road kind of traverses, we made sure when we were working with the COMCOM, they wanted, make sure we had access to any of the detention basins, so the road kind of follows all of that, make sure that we have adequate access to kind of get to any portion of the array. There's enough space between the panels where trucks can drive back and forth between the roads, but just to get to the, you know, stuff that would require maintenance, that's why the road is laid out in that manner. As for basins, there are three detention basins, and they're not shown great. If you flip through some of the other pages, you can see on this sheet, they're not very clear, but if you flip through, you'll see them.
Can you show us a page where they're real clear, and I want to see them clearly?
Yep. So this is the first page here, this kind of shows the southerly end of it. You won't see the total, everything up to the north, actually, yes, you will, so this is showing the whole array. So the first basin is here. That's right where that access road turns to the north, so any stormwater coming off the access road, that should be caught by that detention basin right there. And then the second one is a little bit bigger, that's kind of halfway up on the array, right there. And again, you know, if you're imagining what it is, it's a south-facing slope, so all of our detention, all this stormwater is going to run to the south, so the basins obviously were designed to be at the southern end of the array to make sure that everything's swaled and captured by those detention basins and then released adequately. So that's number two, and then number three is here. So that's the biggest of the three. And if you flip to sheet, if you really want to get a good look at them, if you flip to the end in the details sheet, CR-104, there's actually cross-sections in there for all the basins, and it lays them all out in detail, so you can really look in there. CR-104, it's at the later half of the plan, at the very end. So in my detention basin, one, two, and three, just so you have in mind, this is one, this is two, and that's three. Okay. Insist on me if you have questions, by the way, I'm just kind of going through some of the other stuff as well.
Where's your staging area going to be?
Okay, I'm glad you asked that, so I was just going to get to that. So one of the, one of the bigger things that we did, something that took a lot of time and effort when we were working through the Conservation Commission, was they asked for a phasing plan. So if you look at sheet, remember, just to give you some language to go along with this, they're shown on this sheet, but if you flip to page GI-103, which is the third page and second page after the cover sheet, you'll see the construction sequence is laid out on the right-hand side at the top, you'll see construction sequence. So that, this is the language that goes along with the plan. Basically, what they asked us to do is split it into a bunch of different phases. So we have it split into four phases, the construction into four phases, and then within each of those phases, there's sub-phases, if you will, that kind of break that work into different groups. So the basics behind the phases, the first one is the entrance road and the stream crossing. So the COMCOM was concerned, the road is pretty steep, it's a gravel road right now, it gets washed out. There were some issues with it earlier this year. Just, again, for the record, we spoke to the COMCOM, it wasn't anything that we did out there, but, you know, there was some washout, there was some sediment that was washed into the stream down here, which has been remediated and fixed at this point. But the road is, was a concern, so, and especially the stream crossing. So what we wrote down to do, what we promised to do based on the phasing plan, was to do the permanent road first and install the three-sided culvert here, not do a temporary construction culvert, where a lot of times contractors will put a temporary construction culvert in and crossing in and kind of work in the backlands here, and then do that simultaneously. What we're proposing to do is make this road nice and workable, make sure that we can get to and from the site, do the road first, do the culvert, permanent culvert first, before we do any work back here. So that's phase one, is doing the entrance road and the crossing, and making sure that's all up to speed, and we have inspections as laid out in the phasing plan as well. That's number one. Phase number two is to continue the access road and then do the drainage. So we don't want to cut all the trees without doing, you know, do all the clearing first and not put your basins in in case there are, there's inclement weather or a lot of rain. We want to make sure that we have the detention basins all dug out first, make sure that when we do go and do the clearing, that any rainwater should have the drainage installed and functioning properly, so, you know, the construction, the erosion during construction is not a huge issue. So phase two is the erosion, you'll see the first step involves doing all the perimeter erosion control, and then continuing the access, and then clearing and doing the, digging the basins. So you'll see on this sheet, again, phase two is, you know, defined by this area, phase two A, phase two B, where the two big basins are. We're clearing, you have to do some clearing to make sure we have some dirt to build those basins and make sure the trees are down to dig those basins. But those is phase two, it's laid out, delineated very clearly on the plan, so any contractor grabs this knows what's going on. And there's also, as you asked, staging points for each individual phase. So you can see here, the staging area for, in stockpile area, and they go with their associated phases. And if you flip through, you'll see some of those as well, and I can try to find more details. But just to get through the rest of the phasing plan, after erosion, the access, the drainage is done, that's when we move on to the full clearing, which again is split into two halves, so we don't open the whole property up at once. Split into two phases of clearing, and then grading, you know, doing some rough grading. We don't do a ton of grading, but here, we need to make sure when we're pulling trees out, we comb that area and fill all that stuff back in. Phase three will also include.
So, I'm sorry, are you pulling all the stumps on this property?
We are pulling all the stumps that are within the fenced area, yes. Outside of the fenced area, there's some areas that are cleared, but not stumped, to make sure that we keep that soil integrity that the stumps provide. But in order to drive machinery around here, install the footings that the racking goes on, we have to stump all that area within the red. So that's sixteen point six acres of clearing and grubbing.
Really, not everybody does that. You're the only ones that I've heard so far before this board that's going to stump and grade the whole property. I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, I understand, and I'm not sure who, what other projects you've had in here. I would be surprised to see, every other solar array that I know in Mass where I've been out to, within the fenced-in area, it's all graded, it's all stumped. It gets seeded after, so there's a grass that gets planted, a low-grain grass, but ninety, I would say, almost, you know, everyone that I am aware of, they all grade and pull those stumps out, just to make sure they can drive equipment in and out and get the grading right to put the racking on. So again, that'll happen for the majority of the site in phase three, along with the. Along with the installation of the racking and the paneling and all the electrical, all the electrical that happens kinda at the end of phase three. But that's, you know, the majority of what you see as far as work out there. Um, and then phase four is again, the seeding and the site restoration and any cleanup. So, we go back in there, make sure all the uh outfalls of the drainage, of the detention vault ponds are all cleared out, seeded, and try to stabilize the site. So, those are the phasing steps. And that was something that again, we worked on for six to eight months with the Concom. It's been peer reviewed, they approved of it, they're happy with, with the phasing plans. Our order of conditions reflect all of that stuff. It's quite an extensive list of conditions that we got from uh the Concom.
We don't, we don't have anything from them.
Well, I can, I'd be happy to supply the planning board with the order of conditions.
Yeah, we need that.
Okay, and then the last thing I wanted to talk about is just, I brought this uh sheet just to show where this site is relative to Obutters. Um, we're pretty happy, actually, this probably works. We think this site is fairly secluded, it's obviously in, it's in the rural residential district. Um, but the location of the site relative to where the homes are near it in any of Obutters is, it's pretty, pretty well hidden. It's pretty far in the woods. So, to get an idea of distance, this length here was close to sixteen hundred feet. So, it's fairly long access road to get back in there, but you're driving down and then kinda back up. Um, and all of these homes on Coy Hill are, you know, over fifteen hundred feet away from the array. It is surrounded to the north and to the east by really big uh tracts of land. Uh, one I believe is used in a agricultural manner to the north. Uh, there's likely some agriculture here, but they're big, large, over a hundred acre pieces that surround here. And there's no real homes that get affected by this, it's fairly secluded, it's out in the woods. And we hope that it, you know, we, we are confident that it's not gonna be an impact to the townsfolk, so.
Who's installing the, um, oh my god, the culverts?
Uh, that'll be contractors that work with us. Uh, we do pass this along, ZPT manages the construction as well. Some developers do the development work and kinda hand it off or sell it from there. Um, ZPT holds on to projects and we have a construction arm of the company that does the general contracting. They hire, hire local tree cutters, forestry guys, electricians uh to do the individual tasks. Uh, so it will be someone that is hired by our general contractor, but um, without that information right now.
Did you buy Richardson's land, or is that just part of another parcel that's abutting?
That is part of a parcel that's abutting. Um, and to, just to be clear, we haven't, we haven't purchased anything yet. What we, what's standard in the industry and what we've done in this case is we have offers to purchase on these two properties that are subject to everything kinda working out, us getting our approvals, Tanner Connect and us getting our approvals from uh the town of Warren. So, we have offers, our plan is to own the property, the dirt of the array, uh, in this case. But no, the Richardson's was, is just in the budding piece.
So, what are these lines that come way out here?
Okay, these boxes, these big black boxes are boxes that show you, so this plan CX102 is pointing down here. This will be split up into its own sheet, so it's just showing you, when you flip through, this box is its own sheet further down. Yeah, just splitting it up so you have an overview where you can't get a ton of detail. Or you flip to this sheet or pull this box.
Okay, but it doesn't, you don't want that land, that's not-
The property lines are kinda all just like this and they go down here. So, this is general line of whatever you're buying. And again, this is all not being used, this is all wet, reflect all that, but continues down to the side.
What is all this? According to your legend, all of these dashes here are concrete. Are they not?
No.
It doesn't make sense that they would be, but that's what I'm reading according to your legend, right? Doesn't that look like just little, little bits of concrete?
Yeah, it's, those are not concrete, those are just uh, I think those are actually defining the various uh phases.
That's what I thought too, but I-
It's probably something that looks similar to this that's representing the concrete.
You ready for questions, Ben and June?
Yep.
So, my first question is, I wanna know how are you gonna get all the water? I've walked this site, so I know what the site looks like. And there is a pretty good pitch, all coming down to the bottom of these basins here. How are you gonna collect all that water into those two basins? Now, what I want you to do is show me how your construction is gonna filter that water into those two basins, because you're all around wetland there. And one of the problems that we've had with these sites is it's growing our wetlands. I don't wanna grow any more wetlands. Especially since all of these wetlands here drain and affect the river that goes through the center of the town or stream, whatever you wanna call it. But if you look at it at this time of the year, or after we've had a big rain, it's a river. And it goes down and it obviously dumps in, in the quaybuck. Okay, so I, I'd like to know how that, in your mind, with these plans, is going to work.
Okay. I am gonna defer to our engineers-
Sure.
-who design the site to do that. But what I will say is that this site is designed to the regulations that the state provide to make sure that all that water is collected, it's been ran through a drainage report. And the numbers have all worked out, so-
We understand that.
There's engineering that goes into it, I'm gonna ask our engineer to explain all that, but-
We understand that mathematically, when you guys come here with these catch basins, which by the way, I hate. Okay, when they come here with them, we understand that you've figured it all based on the land and what it's gonna be and that all your numbers mathematically work. The question here though, and I want you to understand when we begin this conversation, so that there's no misunderstanding. Cause I ask hard questions and I'm not meaning to be rude. I don't care what your math says, it's what the town of Warren will experience that's important to me. Okay, so referring to your engineers and your wetland engineers and all of that is great, but you haven't gotten through the planning board's engineers yet. Okay, and that's gonna be an issue unless this is explained real well. I need to understand how this water's gonna work.
I think we can do that.
I'm gonna do my best, but if I'm not clear, please let me know. Um, so, I'm gonna go to the site plans, just to get an overview, so it's CS100. Um, so, like Ernie pointed out, we have the three basins on the southern side. Um, the, the site, as you said, blocks and it's very steep. So, all the stormwater's pretty much going to the south anyway. Um, to a certain way and to dip the stormwater into these basins and to direct those flows, we have minimal grading along um within the array, within the field. So, it's gonna keep, maintain pretty much the same um flow paths that the stormwater will do currently. Uh, once the stormwater gets um here, just before the access road, we have a series of drainage channels, which it's a swale, so it uh kind of collects um on the side slopes and then pitches down into um the direction of the basins.
So, you gotta swale all the way up from the north end of this?
Yes.
That's supposed to direct water that falls from obviously the north part. All falls is supposed to fall into these swales and either one get collected in the center or phase two basin or the phase three basin, which is down in the south.
About halfway through, um, we have one inter- um, I'll call it just um, intermittent uh swale that we created to again alleviate some of the flows that are coming directly and try to get, disperse them out, so it's not all coming down at one point.
So, why not more than one? Why not several to make sure you get all that water, rather than, here's, here's the problem, okay? Just because I've walked the site, I know that it's a hill.
Yes.
It's not flat by any means. So, my concern is that something here goes wrong or doesn't work quite right. You had a bad storm, it's, it's full of debris, whatever, to overflow something.
Yes.
And let it spill over, and I don't wanna see that happen, we've already had that happen at one site.
Yep, so during construction, um, there's weekly inspections that will, will occur. Um, and that checks the silt fence, the hay bales, the straw walls-
But you understand that I'm talking one year, three years, five years, seven years, twelve years, fifteen years from now. I'm not talking about while you guys are there with rakes and shovels in hand, because I would presume tha- that you're, you're, you're a reputable outfit, that you're gonna take care of all that while you're here. So, my concern is what happens to the town and the residents and the land and the property and the rivers and the streams one, three, five, seven, twelve, fifteen years later.
So, there's long-term maintenance too. So, as long as the maintenance is up kept, which seems like a lot, but it's, you know, clearing out the uh, we call it silt from, from the basins, um, inspecting them annually, usually after, um, there's not gonna be too much uh like salt and stuff. But usually it's after the winter, um, and uh before the, the fall, so, I guess spring and fall.
So, what you're telling me is that as long as you take ownership, ZPT cleans their system, this will, should work fine.
There's an operation-
As long as it's-
Yep, and then-
Kept clean, but should it not be for some reason, or should something-
And that's like a catch basin in the street, you know, leaves and stuff get accumulated, people just kick it in there, right? So, some, you know, a back truck has to come out to actually remove it for the, the catch basin to work, otherwise it's just gonna pond. So, it's the same kind of concept. Um, we just don't have, you know, the, the salts, but we have-
Were you up on Phil Bullardoff during this last storm that we had? Coy Hill came to the bottom of Coy Hill. I live up there, you show my house here. It, when that water comes down Coy Hill, it's a river, all the way across the street. And it's bringing dirt and sticks and everything else with it. And it, I know, this is a hill, this is more than a hill.
Yeah, it is.
This is-
Have, have your company calculated the grade there?
Yes, we have.
What is it?
For access road, we're not doing any more than fifteen percent, which is still steep, very steep.
It's very steep.
Yeah, cause you're going in and then you're going down and then you're going up.
Correct. We have some um section views as well that, that show exactly what you've, what you've said about the steepness and the-
What's the number of the?
There are also the CR sheets. 103, 102, 101.
So, just to restate and just to say again, I think the gentleman's, your, your concern, your major concern was what's gonna be done through the life of this. Yes, everybody's out there, everybody's looking at it during the construction time. But what about when this thing's built up, you know, who's out there? So, there is, as Stephanie mentioned, an operation and maintenance program. Whoever owns the project is required to follow, it involves uh inspections, frequent inspections. They make sure no uh equipment is broken, they drive through, check on things, check the fence, make sure detention basins aren't uh clogged, make sure that swales aren't being overflowed, um, and that's pretty essential.
Maintenance plan on these plans, or is that a separate document?
It's a separate document that was submitted.
It's in office.
With our, with our package, so it's submitted, you're totally aware.
I'll take a look at it before the next meeting.
We understand it's wet, we understand, you know, and certainly working through the Concom, they, they made that clear to us. And we've been on-site before, so we, we know that it's wet. Granted, we don't live here and we're not walking around, but we don't make, we can't do much about the rain. If, if it's gonna rain, it's gonna rain, our intention is just-
Is why I asked the question, okay? I don't live anywhere near this in town, I live in town, but nowhere near this.
Sure.
But I have a swale in my yard. To direct water away from my foundation, because my cellar floods if I don't. And if I don't clean it weekly, my cellar floods when the water's running. Because there's so much debris that blows off the trees, so many leaves that end up on my property. I have to clean it almost weekly, in the springtime anyways, when the water's running. Of course, we've been running pretty good most of the winter here, we haven't had any real hard freezes, but- That's what I'm concerned about, is the maintenance plan is great. And if they say the guy's gonna come down once a month, that's great. But if he's not there when the issue happens, that's when we, the town, when I say we, I'm talking the townspeople, the towns' property, the towns' infrastructure, that's when they suffer. Because if that stream that comes by, the um gas station there, what's the name of it?
Alltown.
Alltown, right, overflows, we've had it happen in other places in town, it'll wash out the road.
Yep.
And this plan here looks like we're just taking all of that water that I understand has been there forever and it, it, you know, trickles down in. And I understand your flow rate's the same rate, but here's the contention I've always had with these basins. Let's just use fictionary numbers. In a one-inch rain, you have a million gallons of water that hits that seventeen-acre possum. Okay, you have a million gallons with woods and trees and all that. How much of that water actually flows down into the wetland? Not as much as if you collect that million gallons in a basin. And even though you're letting it out at the same flow rate or close to it, because the law requires you to do that, you're letting it out forever. In other words, it never dries, because that basin's always gonna be, because it's taken so much water. So, my problem with these basins has always been is that you're collecting the water that was naturally filtering through the land, however big the acreage is. And you're letting it flow off of this nicely graded, low-growth grass that doesn't suck up a lot of water. And you're letting it go down to these huge catch basins, how big is that one on the bottom, two-hundred-and-fifty feet or so wide? They're huge, it's the size of a football field almost, right? And you're just holding it there, which is great, because you're not allowing it to break through and get down into the wetlands at a rate that would be higher than what naturally should occur.
Right.
But instead of that million gallons of water draining off of that property in, let's say hypothetically, a week, it may take three months now to drain out of that basin into it. You see what I'm saying?
Well, there are calculations for seventy-two-hour groundwater recharge, so most likely it's going to be within seventy-two hours. So, it's not gonna be months, but again, it's longer than what does it do here.
It's most likely, and if we don't get rains like we've been getting lately, and, and I get all that. And I know that my fictitious plan here is, is extended, but I'm doing that to show you my concern. Not to say that this is a faulty plan, but just to show you, this is my concern with these basins. Cause we're all doing the same thing, except for one company that came in that's not using basins. But, we're all doing the same thing. We're collecting all the water off these huge sites, these huge pots of land, because Warren is hilly, it's part of the hill towns. We don't have a lot of flat area surface, which would be perfect for a solar field, because you don't have to worry too much about drainage, you know, you know what I mean? There's no ungulations, it's easier to build, there's a whole lot of things that are good about a nice flat field, if you will. Okay, so this is my major concern with those basins and the water. We've seen one fail here. They make a mess when they fail, a big mess. They pollute rivers, they, it just gets into a whole lot of issues that I'd rather not deal with. So, I'd like you all to really think hard about this water plan. I'd like to see this water slowed down drastically before it gets to those basins. Okay, I'm not sure how you do that, you, you're the engineer?
Yeah, so in our, in our swales, we have um stone dams. So, again, it's just a, a measure to help slow the water-
To slow it down so it'll impact the ground more before it gets out.
So, there are measures in place um that do that. I think conservation looked at it again very thoroughly and we've added a lot of, you know-
So, my recommendation, just so you know, my recommendation to the board is going to be that we contact our environmental engineer and we have him go over all of these numbers. And we have him look at all of this, right? Cause we're allowed to do our own theory.
Besides the basins?
The basins, the water, the slopes, the everything. Cause we have the right to have, we have the right to have our engineer do that and look at that.
Yep.
The other concern I have is where the access is, I think you're right across the street from an Obutters driveway. So, my concern about that is not mostly where it is once the thing is built. My concern about that is construction. And having somebody annoyed by the truck traffic that's gonna be coming in and out of this site. And it might be minor at first, but you're gonna have logging trucks- And it might be minor at first, but you're gonna have logging trucks, they tend to tear up the roads, they put mud all over the roads. Like to see a cleanup plan for that on a daily basis to make sure that the road is back to a travelable area. Uh, you know, um, and my other concern, and I don't know enough about it, so I I just wanna bring it to your attention, so you know it's a concern of mine, is the cover. I'm sure it was a huge concern for Concom, it's a huge concern for me, so, um, like I said, I haven't looked at it yet, this is the first time I've seen these plans tonight, I had an old set, but this is the, I think that was the other project. But I had, the first time I've seen that, I wanna be able to go over that and understand it a lot better before I speak to it, because it might be fine the way it's designed, I don't know.
Yeah, it was.
I haven't seen it, yeah, we'll we'll ask Concom for their report, they're a little late in getting us, they're they're doing several of these, they're a little late in getting us the reports, we need to see those.
Yeah, I I think you'll you'll be happy at what you learn from the Concom, they had, I know you seem to, uh, wanna request somebody to do it on behalf of the planning board, but they did have a peer reviewer look at our drainage for the site.
They have their own.
They obviously were out there looking extensively at the culvert, it was one of their biggest concerns in addition to the phasing plan, but, yeah, I mean, please do your diligence, I think you'll be happy at what you see. There is also a restoration plan associated with that crossing, because we are disturbing wetlands in that area. So there's some restoration proposed with the project, but, um, it's a three-sided box cover, which is, I know from DEP, that's something they recommend we do.
No, I I'm very appreciative of the fact that you're not planning to just throw a pipe in there, a construction culvert. A lot of them, they do that, and then when they leave, they just pull it out and say, see you later, and you're left to clean up the mess, you know, so, I mean, we're, I'm happy to hear that. And I and I'll be very happy to go over that part of the plan, um, in the next week or so, before your next meeting anyways. For now, Madam Chair, I don't have, um, any other concerns that I can speak about at this point.
I can't thank Bob more more enough to express our concerns, I echo him, I'm really concerned about Chinny Brook. Chinny Brook is a little river that goes along over there, it goes all the way to the road at the bottom of the hill. I look at this as Coy Hill as a mountain, and what I think is, what I think is not fair for the mountain is because right now it works like a sponge, everything that rains, the ground absorbs it, and approval of that is when you go out there and walk, it's all wet. So all that water, the mountain is trying to hold it as much as possible, as soon as you cut the trees and you try to direct the water to the to the basins, all that is gone.
Coy Hill doesn't perk.
There's a lot of, I I noticed that, I went there a year ago, saw the project, I just went there like two or two weeks ago, and guess what, it was a sunny day, but the road is wet. And the road from one year to now, it just got destroyed, so we already have water problems.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's a good point, it's something that I just wanted to touch on. Again, kinda getting back to some of the comments that the other, uh, board member brought up, but you you're certainly fair saying that it's wet up there, and that's depicted in these wetlands, so the water comes down and it collects in these wetlands, that's why they're wetlands, is because it receives a lot of rain, it receives a lot of water, the water travels downhill, gravity, and goes into these brooks, so we're not trying to stop water from going to where it naturally goes, we're trying.
Well, I wish it could, because right now is the opposite, the the mountain is trying to hold as much of water as possible. Once you cut the trees, it's not gonna hold it anymore, it's just gonna go directly into your, into the, uh, retaining ponds, and then you're just gonna dump that into the water, into the, uh.
What I'm trying to get is that the water goes, it is going to go to where the water naturally always goes.
We don't dispute that.
So what we're trying to do is account for the fact that there are trees here, yes, that are gonna be removed. Right now, the trees and the root systems, they do a function to stop that speed of that water from going where it naturally goes. It's gonna go there, it's just how long it takes to go there and what gets absorbed, the small amount that gets absorbed by the roots. So we're taking into account the fact, yes, we are cutting those trees down, we have to do something, because we cut those trees down, to stop that water from coming down the hill so fast. How do we do that? These detention basins, that's the function of those basins. It's not to stop any more water that's currently going to where it goes anyway, whether it be the brook or quite frankly, whether it goes and overflows the main route down here, if it does that, that's already happened before we're going there, we're just, what we're trying to do is not make this any worse than what it is. And by doing so, to do so, we're installing the basins, that function is to account. And again, as you know, you just seem to know, there's calculations and modeling that goes into this, all the engineering work that goes into this, that models how fast does the water travel now, how fast does the water travel when these trees are down and now there's grass growing there, but there's also basins to catch these and slow down that water. So it's important to note that, yes, it's wet there, that's why there's so much wetlands, it's a hill, we all know what happens with the water. It's wet, water goes where it's gonna go, it's gonna go there, today it's gonna go there after we build the site. Our function is to make sure that it doesn't get any worse than what it is, and the water doesn't travel any faster than it does. And this site is designed and engineered.
How about keeping it at the same amount of water?
It, that's that's a requirement.
But that you can't do, because you're going to empty more water on that wetland than would not, than what would naturally occur if all the trees were there. You're just gonna do it at the same flow rate.
Right.
That's all. So instead of draining a million, you know, a million gallons, you're gonna drain two million. That's my problem with that, and we've seen them fail, and this is this is my concern with this.
Yeah, and I understand the town's history with it.
And I'm not convinced that they actually work. I don't think you can stop Mother Nature, you know? I'm not saying that this is the bad, I'm just saying.
All I'm trying to say is that we have to design, we have to design to some sort of regulations, there's published regulations that we, as developers, we have to work to. No one can for sure tell the future about how things are gonna function, what we can do is design things with our best intention, make it known to the board that we're talking to, that we're here to correct any issues if something does go bad, which we are, there's, you know, practices in place for if something fails to be resolved. We don't plan and we don't hope that something fails, yes, there is a, you know, possibility, I I understand the town, I'm sensitive to the town having history with that, but we have to design the site to some sort of regulations. They're put in front of us, we do our engineering work to try to foresee the future as best we can, we design the site to that, and, you know, we're here telling the town, we're we're here to work with them, and we're here to fix any problems. We don't want anything bad happening to the site, just as much as the town doesn't, we're incentivized to make this all work and not have to deal with fixing things.
So another question, where are you going to stage all the equipment for the logging act that?
That's what I asked from the beginning.
Where where is that gonna get staged? I mean, cuz you're gonna, obviously, what are you gonna do with this wood? They're not gonna haul it out in log lengths, at least not most of it, they're gonna chip it up on-site and?
No, they'll haul, they'll log most of it out, uh, truck most of it out at at log length. There's notes in the plan that say to cut it up and log and and take it out.
I thought it was gonna be a chipper, a huge chipper.
No, no, we don't chip, we can't chip that much wood and leave it on-site, so it will be trucked off in logs. Um, stumps will be chipped up most likely, even the stump sometimes are taken out. But a lot of times, we can use the the grindings from the stumps as erosion control and support.
How, um, have you guys calculated how many board feet you're taking out of there?
No, we have not, we have not, but it's, you know, this whole area is forested, so it's quite a bit. And again, it's twenty, twenty-four acres, I think, a hair over twenty-four acres of full, full limit of work, so full clearing, and again, not all of that is grub. We only grub inside the fence where we need to get around. As far as the staging, if I could just get to this, answer that staging question. There are, so these are the zones, and this is, I believe, the staging area for this first phase. I'm trying to find, I know they're all out on here. Okay, so this is staging area, this is a staging area, these are the staging areas associated with the various phases, one, two, three, and four. So that's for material, parking, equipment, you know, anything that comes in, that's staged, that needs to go.
Do you have a plan for watersheds?
We're doing the drainage report.
Conservation was here the other day, and they said that grown-up trees will absorb up to three hundred gallons of water. From my phone view, what I think I will mention is, I would like to see the retaining ponds away from the wetlands.
It's just like.
Where where would you like them, cuz the whole site's flowing southerly, so.
Slap it down.
Can't go any lower, because lower is wetlands.
Very much, but there's ways to distribute, instead of making three big ones, make six small ones. Through, see all that space where your rain is?
Yeah.
There's a lot of space there to have water collected, and then it goes slowly.
Yeah, but we wanna make sure that we put them south of where the open, flat land, well, not flat, but cut and cleared land is, because the water is gonna travel in that direction, so we don't wanna leave any any plans, say it again?
That's what I'm trying to avoid, the water to travel. Right now, the water, when it rains, stays there, with this, now it's gonna travel, so if you distribute your.
The the water, I just wanna be clear, the water does not stay in this area, the water travels down into the wetlands, which is why they're wet. It travels down in, yes.
Tell me if that difference, right now, as it's as it is, and then with all these solar panels and the grass, it's gonna be the same?
I think that's what we've been getting at kinda all night, and we're saying, the point, what we're trying to do is capture them through the the basins, and we have to locate the basins to make sure they collect the water. If we were to put the basins, say, up to the north?
Not to the north, but distribute them, so we are not collecting all the way down, we're collecting in the stadium.
See, what 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 my colleague is trying to allude to is what I've been alluding to, that you're not here, but you don't wanna hear it. You're not filtering the amount of water out of that site, the same amount as when the trees were there, and once it's a solar field. You're gonna be filtering a lot more water down in those basins, because the land's not gonna retain any of it, or it's gonna retain very little compared to what it did when it was forested.
And that's why the basins are sized.
And that's why we have concerns with the size of the basins and where they are on the wetlands and failure occurrence.
As far as the size, I'd like to just hit on that as well, so this system is designed, and the basins are designed size-wise for a hundred.
Hundred-year storm, we've heard it a hundred times, I mean, I I get it.
But, well, my question is, I mean, you guys had one one bad solar array, and now you're you're basically holding everybody hostage cuz you had a bad experience.
Well, not holding everybody hostage, we're we're very concerned about our town, and since this is the town of Warren, we're going to dictate how these projects go in. And we're telling you what our concerns are, so you can make changes or not, that's up to you.
Well, we have to wait till we have our engineer or.
Right, where where is talking blind right now?
Does the town, does the town have a?
Excuse me, who are you?
I'm Attorney George Corritti, representing.
This is our chairman here, and you dress yourself through the chairman, and when a member is talking, you don't interrupt the member. That's just Robert's rule, you go through the chair.
Are we following Rob- Robert's rules?
Okay, go through the chair.
Through the chair, are we following Robert's rules?
Yeah.
We haven't followed them all night, so if you ever start following Robert's rules, on behalf of Madam Chair, I like to be recognized.
Okay.
George Corritti, representing the developer, does this town have a separate stormwater policy or separate stormwater standards by which this project can be designed?
It will be, we are going to have our engineer, we're going to have a stormwater engineer go over this.
I hope so, because the engineer will support what's been done here, while you're asking it through the gym.
If the engineer supports it, then you're fine.
Just, I'd like to point out, I'd like to point out, for the record, if we're keeping notes, that when they came in early spring of last year for a site plan review, this board said, no, go to Concom for it first. You go to Concom, hold up, I'm still speaking, if you go to Concom first.
Wow, you can leave.
No, I won't leave, I won't leave.
Well, you can stand down.
I'll be on the record, and I need to identify what's going on in this case. My client came in spring of last year, was told, go to Concom first.
We have no information from Concom, that's what we've been telling you all night.
This application has been filed for months, Concom should have reported.
They should have.
They should have, it's not my client's fault that you folks haven't reviewed this, you haven't sent it off for peer review, and this qualifies with state stormwater management. To say that, to say that we having the the trees absorb water, you're talking about the canopy, this is not impervious. We're not talking about a faster flow, this is still all grassed, there is gonna be the same degree of, there's the same amount of water that flows, and stormwater management policy of the state recognizes and tells us how we treat that.
That's why we're going to have.
And have that done. This is not fair to these people to come here over and over again and have you bully them and say, we want you to put the.
I am not bullying you, we are in business.
You want these, you want these these catch basins or these detention basins installed on the upper portion of this property? You want to stop the water from flowing down, downhill, flow, no, you don't want it to, he says it's gonna go down, and this gentleman says, we wanted to stop that.
And this gentleman does storm water for a living.
You can't stop the water from flowing down.
Stop it, but we're going to have an engineer look at it. I asked in the beginning, I said, we have not had anything from Concom.
Whose fault is that? The regulations provide that, you give them copies of this and Concom reports to you, if they don't report to you, then this is not a problem.
Seen these plans?
I don't know if it's the first time, I have, we just, we were here the last time.
Got these plans.
We've been here the last time, and it wouldn't give us a hearing.
Oh, no, I offered you to hear.
Three members, three members.
It doesn't matter.
It does matter, cuz I can't get a special permit with three, you know that.
Special permit, but you were offered to be heard, and it didn't matter.
It was an intentional structuring of the board, so I couldn't get the permit.
No, no.
I'm telling you right now, this, I'm telling you right now.
End of this hearing.
Oh, you gotta stop off the hearing, that's fine, I'm just, for the record, I am, I am gonna be advancing claims against this town.
From the, uh, engineer, our water engineer, or whatever, till we get everything from Concom, and this is the first time we've seen these plans, so don't say we haven't.
They've been filed. The plan's been filed, the application's been filed, in all due respect, this town has to, they have to, I I regard what's taking place in this town as a, at violation of my client's procedural due process rights, and I need that absolutely crystal clear, that this is a violation of due process, and I will be filing a complaint, I will be amending my complaint to bring civil rights claims against the board.
We don't care.
Okay, I know you don't, you will.
You sue everybody.
No, you will.
ZPT is suing everybody in the state right now, how many other lawsuits you got?
I will tell you right now.
How many other lawsuits? And you know what, I'm done talking to you, sir, you come in here with an attitude and you attack us.
I I'm sitting here quietly.
And we're sitting here talking to the people that are designing this, and we're telling them our concerns, and I've said that at least ten times, our concerns. And they'll address our concerns. And the last thing that they need is their lawyer to come in here screaming, threatening to sue people.
Tell them to go back and redesign this?
Nobody told them to go back and redesign it, you heard what you wanted to hear. Now be quiet, we're trying to continue this.
We've only got five minutes left, cuz there's another hearing.
And I'm sorry, sir, for this outburst, but you would be better off to come here without your lawyer to present.
We have to have, we have peer review, Graves', not Graves' equipment, Graves' engineering, and what was that thing we just signed tonight for Graves? Is that for this?
We didn't sign for Graves. I just put in, um, other reports.
Can I just add one thing? I I understand this is going out to a peer review. My concern is that we've had an order of condition obtained since November of last year, none of that information has got, made its way over to the planning board.
I will get it on Wednesday.
That's concerning, the other thing is, this fi- this has been filed since when? This project has been filed.
But you were held up with Concom because it's a really tough site. You're on top of a mountain, you're going down in a hole, you're going back up, and Concom made you go back in and fix everything that you guys did without permission.
It wasn't us that did plan that, it's been clearly. It was this property, but it had nothing to do with our work there, we fixed it because we wanted to move forward with the process. It took us eight months to get through the Concom, but what I'm saying is, since we've been through the Concom, there's been another four months where no information has been passed from the Concom to the planning board, and this project has been filed, if you knew you were gonna have a peer reviewer hired to review the project, why didn't you hire a peer reviewer?
If you knew you were gonna have a peer reviewer hired to review the project, why didn't you hire a peer reviewer?
He's been hired, right along.
Why hasn't he been looking at and reviewing the project since October when we submitted this?
Because when this gets to us, then it goes to Graves. After this, when we have our questions, that one, that's when it goes to Graves and we submit our questions and then Graves looks at it and they come back and talk to you. That's the way it's gone for every single one of the solar farms.
Okay. I, I'm looking forward to having them review it. I think they'll agree with our drainage structure.
And that's fine. If it comes back that way and it's fine, fine.
Okay.
That's, you know, it's just gotta be those guys because we, I am not a specialist in stormwater runoff or anything else. All I know is what it's like up on that hill. And I know that it's not percaleable. Most places aren't up there. It's ledge.
Understood. This isn't building residential homes up there either though.
It's everything. No, it isn't. But it's still affecting water that comes down the hill to all the residential homes that are down below you. And going to the river.
My concern is that going up there and putting your foot in the ground like this is hardly enough to tell whether that's gonna affect a butter two thousand feet away. It comes down to engineering analysis and that's, that's why we have to go through that process.
Oh, I know. I'm way far away. I'm not even affected by it.
More than, more than the reason why we'll have our engineer look at, they'll look at Concom's concerns, they'll look at your engineering numbers and they'll look at our concerns and they'll either say, hey, this is really good, or we could do this better, or this could be changed. And that's all we were alluding to here until we were so rudely interrupted. And that's all we wanna do, is show you what our concerns are. Whether we say, why can't you put something here or at the park or in the middle or slow the water down? We're just brainstorming to show you what our concerns are. You people are building, you do what you want. We still haven't overviewed and looked at.
Okay, we're gonna close, not close, we're gonna continue this hearing and we will open the second hearing. When do we continue this?
Four more minutes before.
Four minutes?
Can I have a recess, please?
Yeah. When do we have, um, continue this?
Eight thirty. This one?
Is it already?
The fourth, we already have booked on the eleventh.
It's Borrego.
Twenty-fifth, I have the two subdivisions. But this needs to go to Graves, what you will send to Graves in the morning, if you can, yes.
We'll send, okay, the plans and the stormwater report?
Everything to them. Everything that you fit to us, you can send to them and I will let them know first thing in the morning that that's coming their way.
And you can, um, on this email, you just predict their email, who I'm sending to, okay.
Is it Jeff or Mike?
Jeff.
Yeah.
Those senders involved.
He already knows it's gonna be coming.
Okay.
So. I don't know where you wanna do it.
What is the fourth? Uh, that's too soon for Graves.
Right, he does not have time. Um, the eighteenth is out, that's closed, the building. So the twenty-fifth, we have two subdivisions that we have to look at. So I don't know if we're going into March.
Take the date.
What's good, we got the fourth?
That's fine.
The eleventh, let me make sure there's no holidays.
No holidays.
Okay.
February, what do we have?
February eleventh, we do have something, um, let's see what one that has. February eleventh is Borrego, that one might not take long.
What can you do with that?
Do you think Graves could have it done then?
Tell them.
For February eleventh?
They've, they've, they've got a lot going on too. Cause we're gonna be sending two up today, tomorrow to them. They are coming on the fourth for one that we already have.
Graves's?
Mm-hmm, that's a little rest, they're coming to that one.
Okay.
So I would say.
Well, while Graves is gonna be here.
Yeah, but that's too soon.
That's too soon, he's not gonna have time to.
Oh, that fourth, right, but the eleventh?
So we.
How was it, the other fourth?
Is the other.
March fourth.
I'm not sure how long subdivisions take. We've never done that.
The subdivisions are the twenty-fifth. I've never.
We've not done the subdivisions, no way it's gonna do it subdivision.
Right, so, do you wanna go into March?
I suppose.
The fourth?
And if anything changes, we can notify them.
March fourth?
Mm-hmm.
I would have preferred a February eighth.
Yeah, well, we're, we're trying, yeah, but we've.
I would prefer.
What, where the eleventh doesn't work?
No.
We already have a solar.
I don't think Graves is gonna have time to get their reports done. To do both of them, cause we're gonna, you're gonna have the second hearing at seven thirty, I mean, eight thirty. So they're not gonna be able to do both and Barry wanted both of these on the same night, keep that.
Well, can we just, can we schedule for the eleventh and if you can't get it down, we can continue? Mike is, Graves is pretty good with them, we can get them PDFs tomorrow, we can sign his review, they're fairly speedy.
Do you want to do that? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I will have to let you know exactly. Time?
That's fine.
Good.
Sure.
I say eight o'clock, well, seven thirty we have in Borrego.
Oh, that's right.
I think you can schedule us anytime after seven thirty, even if it's seven forty-five and if it's after that, we, we'll be here, wait.
We'll do eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, yeah, cause we already have a solar.
Who do we got? Borrego first? What time?
Yeah.
Seven thirty.
That should be done in fifteen minutes.
Borrego?
Yeah, that's Coyle Hill. I mean, that's our Crumlin Road, right? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that shouldn't be long.
It shouldn't be long at all, fifteen minutes.
We can always open and continue.
It was at seven forty-five then?
Seven forty-five?
Yeah.
Yep. That way there, it was done early, you can get in early and we'll just open it and, and reset, you know, reset it if it's not.
Okay.
But the Borrego thing should be fifteen minutes.
So February eleventh at seven forty-five.
Good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna continue the public hearing for special permit number two eighty-nine, site plan number fifty-seven for ZPT. The applicant is requesting to construct and operate a three-megawatt ground-mounted solar energy facility on Reed Street, also known as the Sussex Map nine watt.
Uh, good evening. My name is Adam Christie, Vice President of Pro-Tech Energy Solutions. I'm here representing ZPT Energy Solutions tonight for this project. Unfortunately, I was unable to make the first meeting due to, uh, personal circumstances, but here tonight, Barry couldn't make it up, so swapping in. One of the things that Stephanie is passing out right now, or will be in a moment, are updated presentations of that rendering that was passed out at the first meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't here to explain it since I used to work for the company that actually flew and did the drone. Uh, so I would've been able to explain a little bit better, but, uh, I've marked these up, uh, in providing context of where things are and reference to them so that you can see, uh, how, where you're looking from. Uh, unfortunately, because with this program, there's millions of points that are put in, downloaded into this program. When they kinda colorize them from the photos that they take, they zoom out and provide these perspectives for us. So unfortunately, there's no way to tell how high up we are or scale and where there was a scale, I tried to give dimensional references for you.
Definitely you can't stay over four hundred feet because it's illegal.
Excuse me?
Definitely you can't go over four hundred feet high because it's illegal.
No, a hundred and fifty meters is the required altitude that we have to fly, uh, with these drones. Uh, although, the company Meridian Associates, uh, they're one of the only ones in the Northeast that has this equipment and they have to have an FAA licensed pilot to fly this and every flight path has to be approved by the FAA. You have to notify them and if you're within five miles of an airport, uh, they gotta get approval from the airport tower, so.
I understand. Everybody knows you're here because I'm going high.
Yeah, I know a little bit. I was selling report when, uh, we implemented the program, my old company and, uh, it was great seeing it grow and these images now, these are like some of the first that have been produced, so.
They're not very good, huh? Honestly?
Well, I mean, it's tough because the time of year when you fly and I mean, if, if you're flying it in the fall, you get every single branch. When you fly in tree cover, you're limited since you can't penetrate the canopy. But what the purpose of doing the flight is so that out of those millions of points that are coming down, you get a few that hit the ground and give us accurate topography, which is more accurate than having a survey crew go out there and take, you know, twenty-five by twenty-five foot grids in the forest. So that, that's really what the tool is and then trying to colorize these to provide context, it helps. Uh, so if you'd like to go through those, um, I can do that and I just wanted to summarize since the last meeting. The plans that were submitted to conservation, uh, that are before them have been provided to you. Uh, they were dropped off, Stephanie, a week and a half ago, I believe. Uh, I'm not sure the exact date.
Thursday?
This past Thursday or Thursday before?
These new plans?
Yes.
Thursday.
Was this, okay, sorry. Um, so those were delivered and as far as where we are with conservation, the past two meetings have been uh, postponed and continued. First Joyce was sick and then she got some feedback. Uh, so we're going out and we have to revise one thing on the plan for conservation that they asked for. Uh, we are committed on the thirteenth of February, Wednesday, to have the order of conditions finalized, uh, conditions uh, approved and we'll be walking out of there with the approval, uh, after talking with conservation. Uh, there's just one little thing we're doing and that's it. So we'll be finalized on that. It's been through peer review. Uh, I understand that, uh, obviously I had some of the questions about the renderings at the last meeting and as well as stormwater, which, uh, in this we can go over as well.
And the driveway entrance.
And the driveway entrance, yes. We did look at, into that and I guess I could go over that first since it, hopefully it'll be the quickest thing to go over.
And that's one of the handouts.
So with conservation, um, one of their requirements that they've instilled in the town of Warren is that they, um, apply seventy-five foot no-touch. Uh, they don't want anything that was not previously developed to be touched. And in this application where we are utilizing the existing access road that goes from Reed Street all the way to the back, that being in the buffer zone, it's just a restoration of the existing. So, uh, if you were to look at it. So this was a wetland here at the corner that was flagged and this green line right here represents the seventy-five foot no-touch and this is the hundred-foot buffer zone that was, uh, highlighted on this plan, it's been shown on the plans. And this right here is a standard fire truck. Um, I don't believe that was, is that a pump truck or a articulating? Looks like it's a standard fire truck, but, uh, typical in most towns. Obviously, you're not gonna get a big pump truck that would go into these, it would just be a standard one. Uh, and even in this case, most of the time, it's a rescue truck, which would be small. So in this case, we're showing the regular standard-sized fire truck and we're showing the turning radius coming off of here. I understand you wanted us to investigate moving it closer to the bend and since we got the seventy-five foot and the sightline's coming off of it, if we were to have a vehicle here, the sightline would get cut off by the curve and down here would still maintain that existing sightline since it's a very straight, long pitch. So here we're demonstrating the existing access drive that we're proposing, um, to show that for a fire truck, for safety from sightline, stop and sight distances, although this will be maintained, this area would not be. And that would cause a public safety issue with the fire department. So here we're showing that it comes in, um, with the existing alignment and so we did investigate, but unfortunately, since this is not disturbed and the stone wall, uh, and I know that the town does have a stone wall bylaw, correct? So we did look into it, but I wanted to show you the proposed in that this out of the two options proposes the best conditions for access, not only for our project, but also for the fire department. And on top of that, where you also have the utility poles and the catch basins, in order to slide that down where we'd be in violation of that seventy-five foot, you know, conservation really preferred that we did not do any of that. I'm not sure if you have any more questions on this.
I think whether for the fire truck, I think it was for the construction.
Yeah. I mean, it's gonna be the exact same thing, a fire truck or a construction vehicle. You have a large vehicle coming out of that site, you know, they're much larger, they don't have the acceleration. You have the same problems with stopping sight distances, it would be a safety risk to anybody on that road if it was moved closer, uh, to the bend versus than where it is now. And there are some thinning of trees here, so the stopping sight distances is even greater, uh, from further back in the site. Now, if you'd like me to, I can move on to. Stephanie, gentlemen? So explain, uh, the index sheet, which before was, uh, a little black and white, literally. So the blue line here outlines the existing property line, uh, here in blue. One, two, and three, the red, those indicate the aerial perspectives that were taken. Um, and then these purple lines here, A, B, and C, those are where we provided the profiles and how they're orientated. So B will be on the left side of the page for profile, B prime will be on the right side. Um, and for purposes of a scale, right here, we have a thousand feet, um, so that provides some context uh, in this. So this is more, you know, you got Reed Street, Brimfield Road and down here you have, um, Brook Road. It was depicted on part of the sixth sheet. I'm sorry, second sheet. So this one here, we decided, I decided to use this as sort of the overview and provided some color on here. Provided a north arrow, provided some details. Um, here's our array here and although this is twelve fifty and that's two thousand, because of the angle of the image, this is a shorter distance in reality than up here because of where the, the points were rotated. So Brook Road, Brimfield Road. So from the closest point, the Brookfield Road to the array were six hundred and sixty feet. Uh, from Reed Street, following the existing accessway all the way to the entrance of our, of our array is two thousand and forty feet plus or minus. So the red dash line shows the existing access, which will be, uh, restoring to the gravel access that was presented at the first meeting. Uh, in most cases, it's, uh, foot for foot, so it's fifteen, we're replacing it in fifteen. In some cases, it goes down a little bit and we're providing the fifteen-foot requirement. And then proposed tree clearing line, maybe a little difficult to see on this print, but on yours, you can see the, that's just the proposed tree clearing line there and the lighter green is just to depict the grass that will be in its place. Or I should say, within the tree clearing line because along the edges of the array where there is not, uh, proposed drainage basins is the selective clearing, um, the selective trimming area. So this'll all be wooded as well. It'll just be feathered back and that's shown on the plans. And that's eight forty-one Brimfield Road, which I believe is a cooperative of some sort.
It's Trailer Park.
Trailer Park? I was trying to say different. So we've got that down here. Again, on your first sheet, which showed, uh, overlooking Reed Street, we've got Reed Street right here, it's just an elevated view. I believe I've got three of these of similar directions. This is all looking, uh, east. Again, we've got the red dash line that goes all the way to the array. Uh, as you can see with the tree cover where it's gonna be cleared, none of that is going to be seen from the road. Uh, again, that's two thousand feet. You got the array back here. Brimfield Road, I have shown here approximately where it is. However, the trees, as you. However, the trees, as you, hard to see on this, but all of this is existing tree height to remain. So you got eighty-foot trees along that eastern edge of the array that's gonna remain before it drops down to Brimfield Road. And again, you can see these are just pockets of wetlands that were picked up. And they're black because the laser reflects off of it and unfortunately, doesn't pick it up all the time, the little interference. And the next two are similar, just showing you from different elevations so you get a better idea of the topography and the tree heights that are going to remain. And this one is the lowest in altitude, you can see the tree heights here along Reed Street. And then you got the existing path going all the way back, weaving through the tree line. Probably in about this area here is where you'd have your, that little wetland buffer zone where we are basically going to conservation for, is that little piece right in here. I believe it's three hundred feet of buffer zone work with a hundred feet, a hundred-foot overlap. You can see the topography on the eastern side, it's coming down into the site, this side is higher. Here, it's a little tough to tell probably on what you have, but again, it goes up here. And essentially, our site is a bowl on the top of this hill. Here's another view, a little bit further down Reed Street. Again, at a different angle, you can more clearly see the trailer park. You can see how the panels are waving. I'm not sure, do you guys have any questions at this point on those? Here's a location on Brimfield Road. It is just beyond eight fifty Brimfield Road. This is the entrance, the two entrances to the trailer park over here I highlighted. There's a little house I drew up for you, since the points are only getting the top of the house as opposed to the side. So I threw it in to give you visual representation of it. So the solar field is actually in this location here behind all of these trees. Based on the topography of the plans, this is, you know, it's flat for the first like two hundred feet to about the back part of all of these homes, and then it just ramps up the hill. And at the top of this is a ridge, and then it dives back into our site. So none of the stormwater from our array is getting to Brimfield Road. Everything is traveling either to the wetlands a hundred and twenty feet away to the north, the system, the buffer area. And then there's the area to the south as well. And all of that pulls back into existing wetland systems that are on the site. I'm sure if anybody has any questions on this one? And now we're getting into the profiles and section views. Again, A, A prime on the first sheet indicates where we're taking it from. I've provided some distances on here, provided some context. We've got the proposed tree clearing limit shown here. We've got a hundred and fifty-foot vegetative buffer that we're providing per the bylaw. This property in here is owned by seven thirty-two Brimfield Road. This site actually wraps around to the north of six eighty Brimfield Road, and that's where they have their residence along Brimfield. So from edge of Brimfield Road to the edge of our vegetative buffer and tree clearing, we're six hundred and seventy-five feet, plus or minus away. And this area within the array at the angle of the section is at five hundred and eighty-six feet. And this is when you're looking north. So we'd be at the southern end, looking up at the array, as if it were depicted on the plan. And here's a... Any questions on this one? This is section view B, looking northeast. If you look on the cover sheet, it's the one that's slightly at an angle, we're cutting it through. We've got, again, the tree clearing line, a hundred and fifty-foot vegetative buffer. From our property line, we've got four hundred and twenty-five feet to the Brimfield Road right away. That property, that is the four hundred and twenty-five feet between us and Brimfield, is seven seventy-two Brimfield Road. And on the other side, for reference, I've got seven seventy-five Brimfield Road depicted. So that's, that's all on existing vegetative buffer here, that's approximately six hundred, I'm sorry, five hundred and eighty feet. And on the last one, which is the section view going from north to south, so in this case, we'd be looking east, as if we were over at Reed Street. So to Brimfield Road, slight angle, it's not fully to the south, we've got nine hundred feet until we get to the dwelling at eight fifty Brimfield Road from our property line. So minus seventy-five, it's in the middle, it's where the zone changes.
We don't get to see any of the catch basins on these sections, do we?
The, the detention basins?
Yeah. Yeah.
They would be built right into the slope where there was, I mean, these are, these are showing existing topography. So we don't have the capability of putting in 3D points to create the basins on here. And there wasn't a section view that was taken, this was, these were created in order to depict...
Just existing information.
Well, not only that, but also to depict where Brimfield Road right away and the impacts of the abutting properties to the east, the south, and also showing the topography with the steep grade and the bowl effect on that side.
And that's where you're letting out all that water, is right on that deep grade right there?
No, the water does not go there at all.
Where's the basin? It's at the south end of that array, right?
It is, but that basin at the south end of the array, this charges back into the abutting vegetative wetland system that does not go in that direction. So this comes out here, so this all comes in here, this is not steep, over here is all steep. This is all feathered, and all of this drains back into this system here. And this system comes all the way back up, and this system comes all the way in here, crosses underneath that culvert here in Reed Street.
Okay.
So there is no direct discharge to the abutters on Brimfield Road.
Were you using swales again in this design to keep that water from floating over to the abutters side?
Not as much as in the previous...
But you are using one, I noticed, along that, that eastern side there, just to make sure that nothing flows over and out.
This is a lot, the slope's not as steep on this side.
It is deep on the east side down to the road.
Correct.
For, for a bit. I mean, the lot, the house lots are pretty flat out there, but then, I mean, I'm very intimate with this piece of land because I hunted it for fifteen years, so I probably know it inch by inch. Yeah, so you've got a swale there, and that's gonna keep that water from ever getting to that ridge and...
Correct.
Topography-wise, this site's fairly interesting because it, like I said, it's essentially a bowl. Because you've got this long distance coming off of Reed Street, and then you've got a high point here. And then you have another high point right there in the middle. And then you've got this high point along the edge of the property, and then you've got high points down here. So you've got watersheding this way, watersheding this way, watersheding that way. It's essentially going all four directions. And so the swales, in this case, as long as they are, they're not taking in a lot of water. They're slowly redirecting it, the slope's on this site not as steep as previous applicant of the project. So the concerns of any, you know, volume of water in this are fractions compared to the last one. Standard conveyance of stormwater to get it from twenty-eight point B, proper check dams, obviously the O M.
Definitely won't see it from anywhere.
No, and that's, that's why, you know, I...
It's really not the perfect place for that.
Can I get that among the minutes? No, we've worked for a while with Mr. Guet, and, you know, I know in the past where he's tried to do some motocross, you know, official motocross track and everything. And out of all the uses that this property could potentially have, this is the most passive possible use in the best possible position in town, I feel. Not just because it's my project.
Have you walked the corner of... Brimfield Road and Brook Road?
Brimfield Road?
Brimfield Road and Brook Road.
I have, I've driven through that intersection.
I can see water over there, and then there's a little stream that goes across of the road and goes into the, the trailer park.
Yeah.
And so that water, it's coming from somewhere.
Yeah, none of that's coming from this area. This is all at higher elevation and all goes to a different watershed.
That would, that would be the only one I'm concerned about.
Yeah. Again, down here, Brimfield Road, Brimfield Road and, sorry, again...
Brook Road.
Brook Road. None of our stormwater gets to that location. I mean, if there was a small piece, you can see right in here, there's a little wetland that was identified from previous projects. The amount of water that would be coming off of this site would be demin...
Does this have to go to Graves too?
Yes.
This is the other one that's going to Graves?
We were holding off on this one until we got these news, so that can be sent up.
Yeah. And you said again, that was Jeff?
Jeff.
Jeff.
I don't have any questions.
And Concom isn't gonna be ready till the thirteenth, though, so we can't do this one on the eleventh, then, correct?
Concom?
They gotta get to, they gotta delineate, they gotta get to a small area of wetland.
So our, our permitting with conservation is not for the solar project. It's for the three hundred foot of restoration, so it's technically a limited notice of intent. Where the solar project, under DEP's regulations, they don't have jurisdiction. I mean, we've, you know, we've gone through with the circuit rider and everything with DEP, and, you know, they're aware, and we're not trying to hide anything from Concom. And, you know, Joyce has been amenable to it, she's more than happy to provide comments, and, you know, we've been addressing them as we go, you know, her input is valuable. She didn't spend a lot of the time on it as if she has on Coey Hill. But from Coey Hill, with the same engineer, we were able to incorporate everything that was vetted through the three peer reviewers on that project to make sure that all of the notes, sequencing, everything was incorporated into this design, even though they weren't going to be fully vetting that. And so she did review the notes on their end and has no comments on those. And everything's been handled, except for one final piece, it was...
That's where they're gonna put the, the area or something?
Yeah, so in the three hundred foot, where it gets close to that, the wetland, because it's a pinch. So over the years, the wetland, you know, I don't know if it was delineated properly nine years ago, but where we identified the wetland in order to protect that resource area, we're just right off the edge of the road doing, in that case, wooden garbrel.
Yeah.
Just to prevent any vehicles, you know, because Mr. Guet still uses this for recreation, hunting, everything else. In order to prevent him, us, anyone from ever affecting that, we went with that. And that was very receptive to conservation.
Are there any other questions?
Nope.
No.
Same.
Audience, okay.
Audience?
Martha Javiera? How many acres is this site?
Um, I think this one is...
I recall, it's approximately seventeen acres.
It is just under twenty.
Are you purchasing the land or leasing it?
We're just leasing this from the landowner. We have a standard twenty-year lease with options in place. And we'll be responsible for maintenance of the system for the life of the project. And once the project is complete, we remove all of the equipment, recycle it, decommission the whole thing, and reseed it, and give it back to the landowner.
Do we have, Kathy, do we have MSD sheet, MSDS sheets on the panels that these folks want to use on file?
Yes, in the application package, there is major system components consisting of inverter, trans...
Yeah, I would just wanna know, you know, who's manufacturing the panels, where they're coming from, and what's inside them?
Sure, yeah.
That's what we're mostly interested in, in case, you know, we have a massive hundred-year hailstorm, and now we've got seventy-five hundred broken panels, and what's gonna happen when they get rained on?
Well, what's gonna happen is we're gonna have glass to clean up.
Yeah, you're gonna have a lot of people there.
Well, luckily, solar panels, you know, they're not toxic, they're made up of glass, aluminum, and silica, and...
Some small toxic.
They're encapsulated, they're, you know, regulated by the EPA and everything. You know, these aren't unregulated panels coming out of Korea.
Well, that's all we're making sure of, you know, that's part of our job too, right? Is to make sure that you are reputable like we think you are.
So the panels that we've depicted...
What you say you're going to use.
Yes. So the ones that we have, obviously, we've provided you the interconnection application and what was submitted to the utility, and the major system components we're submitting to you. Sometimes those documents, one will say Jinko Solar, one will say Canadian Solar. Because at the end of the day, is, once we get a project approved, we gotta get the funding from our investment partners, and we try to procure the panels. So we may have intent on using Jinko three eighties, but now they may sell five hundred watt modules for a reasonable cost. And now we can shrink the footprint of our array, maximize it. So we never know what the final product is, but we have to submit it to the building permit, building inspector and the electrical inspector. So that's when we do identify the exact panel.
Are there any more questions?
Do I have any more questions? At this time, Madam Chair, I believe I do not.
Yeah, I just have one. For the, it's gonna be a battery storage.
Correct?
Yes.
Do the batteries, do the batteries that you're gonna be using, do they have cobalt in them? I'm just curious.
The batteries that, so...
I know they're lithium, but I'm wondering if cobalt is...
Correct. So we've got three pads here, two of them would be for battery cabinets. We're in the process of procuring the batteries that we will be using. They're lithium ion, as far as if there's cobalt in them, I do not have that answer.
They would give the MSDS sheet here.
In the packet on them?
We are in the process of acquiring that, since, obviously, battery storage is fairly new. Trying to find someone that we're, you know, a product that we're gonna use and then getting this. We've been asking our investment partner for a while, and, you know, they've been doing these large projects in Hawaii recently. And they just got some batteries out there that took almost two years to get. So once we have that information, we'll provide it. You know, all the specs would have, you know, the fire suppression and all that standard stuff and the hardware that's involved with it.
That could be on order of conditions too.
Our resident brings up a good question, so the batteries will be in a self-contained unit?
Yes.
And that unit will have enough floor space in it to self-contain a spill?
Yes.
Do you have any questions? Do you wanna continue this?
Yeah, that's what you need.
Okay, went.
Whatever you want.
February eleventh, eight thirty, similar situation as the other one. If it's not ready, we continue, if it's ready, the site's...
Might as well.
I'm okay with it.
Four eight, whatever time you put down, I'm not sure.
We have them at seven forty-five, so I'll have a eight fifteen.
That works fine.
Sure.
They'll be talking longer. I thought you supposed to...
So February eleventh, unless Graves doesn't have enough time.
The next available meeting, I know you said that you've got two subdivisions at the end of the month, but would March fourth be the next available option?
Probably.
And at that point, I mean, obviously, if that happens, we'd be able to at least do a round of revisions that Graves will likely have on little administrative things, and then get all of that wrapped up into you. And I guess at that point, our hope would be to close on the fourth of March, if that, if nothing else jumps out at anyone of Graves.
Well, we won't close it on the fourth, we need time to do a decision, so that takes a little time.
Let's do our best.
Want me to draft for you?
Well, it's just that we got like seven other projects to deal with, so... Being here six hours a week, eight hours a week, ten hours a week, whatever I can afford to put into it, be a volunteer, try to get through all of these plans, it's hot enough just to keep the project straight.
Understood.
Who's who, who's what, where's it going?
Okay, is there a motion to continue the hearing until February eleventh?
I think we should continue the hearing until February eleventh.
Second?
Oh, second, we have a time, do you have a time for that hearing?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, thank you, Ma'am Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We'll wait to see you on the eleventh.
That will be done?
You got it.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.